Welcome to the June 17 Board of Education meeting. We have seven members present, none absent. The Board has been in closed session since six o'clock this evening for the purposes of discussion of employment of employee, labor negotiations, the review of closed session minutes for release, and then the approval of the May 27 and June 10 2014 closed session minutes. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for the very, very best part of any Board of Education meeting, student recognition. Mr. Purnell.
We're going to start off with the York Community High School Boys Track and Field Team that is here this evening to be honored by the Board of Education. This team really epitomizes the name "team." If you looked at what they did at the states, they really, as a team, won the state championship. Not any one individual, not any one or two individuals, but as a team, really took the Class III divisions. So it's really a pleasure for me to introduce Coach Stan Rendell, and if he would come up and introduce his coaching staff and the students, and then the Board of Education has a proclamation for the students and the coaches.
Did you get a copy of this? I asked somebody to hand this around. Would you please? I'm retiring, so it's my last year. I guess I can do whatever I want. It's been a very -- it's been an honor to be a part of this school district and to coach, and especially to be involved with track. I got hired in 1986, and Joe and I coached together until 2000, and then 2001 I became the head coach. Right from the get-go, we had a philosophy with Joe that we were going to be really good, but we weren't going to be elitist. We never cut an athlete. In fact, I looked through the records. There was a five-year span where we averaged over 200 kids a year from 2008 to 2013. That's a lot of kids, right? And that ran the gamut from kids that earned full rides to kids that had a lot of special needs. And it didn't take me long to figure out that we needed a lot of eyes on kids. So I have a coaching staff of 11. Four of those spots are paid, have stipends. The other seven are all volunteers, right? And they are outstanding coaches. I have kids come back, and I won't name the schools. They're Big Ten schools, and they said the hardest adjustment for us in college was to acknowledge that we had better coaching at York than we were going to get at the University of such-and-such and such-and-such and such-and-such. And very proud of my staff, very proud of these kids. We had a total of 10 kids score in the state meet. I knew we were going to have problems. The seniors graduated May 18th. And so they were practicing after their school days were over and competing after their school days were over. And then I said, "They might have something for you." A lot of these kids, a couple of kids are working tonight, and a lot of them just said they had conflicts, so. But this group here represents what we have. The first boy at the end here who didn't get the memo on the suit is Josh Farrar. Josh was a very busy boy. He ran in four events and medaled in three. Made tremendous progress. Is gonna -- accepted an offer to run at Leola University. These kids are really, really good. He ran in a four-by-one. We won no first places, but the event of the day was a four-by-one where we lost literally, if you calculate it out, by four millimeters to another school. But the times were extremely fast, some of the fastest times in the history of the state meet, which has been going on since 1892. In fact, if we had competed in the Big Ten meet that year, this year, we would have beaten Penn State, the University of Indiana, and Michigan State. And that's athleticism and competitiveness. Josh is a sprinter. He ran the 100, the 200, and the 400. The next young man is Jarvis Hill. I'm the head coach, but I'm a position coach, and he had to labor under me and was able to overcome that obstacle and placed in the 300 intermediate hurdles. Did not have a very good race when Friday came back and ran a tremendous race on Saturday with his all-time best time from lane one, which is a terrible lane to have. Also, a very, very class individual. He has also accepted an offer to run at DePaul University for this next year. The next young man, we had 172 kids on the team this year, and I have one manager. And I don't need any more managers when I have the ultimate manager. I told a group, "I have a hard time dealing with him sometimes, but it's usually the case when I deal with people who are more mature than I am." He's very proactive. He's very organized. I remind people once, he only rolled his eyes at me once. I don't even remember what the request was, but I almost fell over. Not only did he manage for me, his brother managed for me, and his brother went from York to becoming the head manager at the University of Minnesota. And I don't know what field Brian Baker is going to go into, but whatever he does is it's going to be outstanding. Brian Baker, the ultimate manager. On the far end, we didn't have many underclassmen, but Matt Plowman was our representative in the distance races, and he ran the half-mile and did a very good job. Finished fifth in a very competitive meet and a competitive race. In fact, I asked him today, after the season was over, he was invited to a race in Missouri and ran the mile in 4:09. I don't know if you know times. That's awfully fast. In fact, if we would have ran him in the mile at the state meet, he would have won the mile in 4:09. The good news for Matt and whoever my successor is, he's a junior. He is back. He's made a lot of progress over the years. Everybody keeps thinking you're either fast or you're not. And I always tell the kids, "There's no such thing as a lucky race. How do you have a lucky two-mile race? How do you become lucky in pole vault 16 feet as we had a kid do a couple of years ago?" In fact, if there's any luck involved in the meet, it tends to be bad, I think. I'll give one last story before I introduce my coaches. There's always drama on a team, and we had some kids that are really good kids, and they got hurt and they couldn't participate in it. It just crushes you. But we had one athlete, after qualifying in two events for the state meet, the Tuesday before the state meet was diagnosed with mono. He was devastated. I almost felt as sorry for him as for myself and went over to his house, and he says, "You know, I think I've had this for three weeks. I haven't felt good for three weeks." The bottom line is, on the morning we left for the state meet, the doctor was willing to sign off on the high jump but not the pole vault. They're always worried about the spleen and the impact and stuff like that. And if I ever see that doctor, he's going to wonder what this way this stranger is hugging him. But the doctor released him. We got the signed note. He is released to do the high jump. He placed third, jumped six feet eight inches with mono. If he doesn't high jump, we don't trophy. We're one point short of a trophy. And as soon as I knew he could high jump, somehow I thought, in my heart of hearts, we'll be in much better shape. But these kids were outstanding competitors, great citizens, great students, I'd like to say all the time. But the good news is they matured. And one of the fun things about being a coach for 44 years is watching these kids grow up in the manner you hope they grow up, and this group was no different. Now I'd like to introduce my assistant coaches that came tonight. Come on up. I have a staff of 10 coaches. They're all from all different kinds of walks of life, et cetera. A number of them have been head coaches in other high schools and situations. We'll start out on this end. We needed God on our side, so we got a pastor to volunteer. And so Pastor Memlets, take a step forward. Your prayers are excellent. They did the job. He used to be the head coach at Omer's College, and he works with the distance kids and really, really bailed us out in a lot of ways this year. Excellent, excellent coach. The next individual is the only track coach that works in the building at York, and he's a volunteer. And while he was working on his graduate degree, he was balancing that out, and when he could afford time, he'd come out and help us on the horizontal jumps. Been with us three or four years. I know three for four years. So he's volunteered for four years in this position. Mr. Nolan, take a step forward. Nolan Lamb, horizontal jumps means the triple and the long jump. On the far end, these two are volunteers. Another volunteer, Tom Clancy's been with us. Take a step forward, Tom, so they know who the retired teacher is. Tom had a long career at Butler Middle School in Oak Brook, and then we talked, really, another one of my assistants talked him into coming out and helping us on a short-term basis, and the year was 2003. And he's been with us every year since then. He took a sabbatical for one year, missed us so much, he came back. One of the best coaches. I always think he should run a clinic on how to treat kids. Seriously, he treats them with such dignity, and they respond in kind. On the far side is one of our paid coaches, a stipend coach, Mike Murphy, works with a shot put in the discus, and he teaches in our middle schools and has been with us for seven years, worked with the girls' team before us. All of these coaches do a phenomenal job. Everybody talks to me about, well, one thing is, I don't -- it costs you to coach. I have people that do round trips of almost 30 miles per day, and they don't teach in our school district, and they're volunteering. And then the other thing is, I had a couple of people attend a clinic that cost them over $400 to attend on the physiology that dealt with our sport. They were not reimbursed. And of all the things I'm going to miss, I'm going to miss the kids, but I'm also going to miss my assistant coaches because of the collegiality we had and the passion that they had, and it's been a great, great run, and we had a great time at it, and I couldn't have been around a more impressive group of people in my life. Thank you very much.
All right, guys, please, please don't go anywhere. Stay on up here. We got more.
Thank you. I too have a love for track, so this is certainly an honor to come up and to recognize the York Boys Track Team and their coaches and staff. I think there was a lot of things that were said, and I certainly can't attempt to repeat them, but a couple of things that were noted. It talked about teamwork and how they wouldn't have gotten here if they weren't willing to help each other out. And the other thing that is really unique about track is PRs, your personal best. It's not about whether you won, but did you improve? And I think that's something that's very unique and very important in life, is always trying to do that personal best. That said, let me read the plaque, and let me read the proclamation. Whereas on May 31, 2014, the IHSA Boys Track and Field Competition took place at Eastern Illinois at O'Brien Stadium in Charleston, Illinois. And whereas the York Community High School Boys Track Team claimed the Class III-A state title with a total of 40 points, and whereas the following team members competed in nine individual or relay events, winning medals in eight. Etoro Akbakpan placed second in the 400-meter relay and third in the 800-meter relay. Alexander Baschwa placed sixth in the 600-meter run. Joshua Farrar, thank you, sorry, Joshua, placed second in the 400-meter relay, fifth in the 100-meter dash, and third in the 800-meter relay. Gregory Gornik placed second in the 400-meter relay and third in the 800-meter relay. Jarvis Hill placed seventh in the 300-meter intermediate hurdles. Kyle Matis placed ninth in the 3200-meter run. Jeffrey Osling placed second in the 400-meter relay. Matt Plowman placed fifth in the 800-meter run. Jack Saxstetter placed third in the 800-meter relay. Reed Smith placed third in the high jump. And whereas along with alternates Emmett McCoy, Theodore Harold, Alexander Tagg, in addition to team manager Brian Baker, unseated the Class III-A champion Lake Park and additionally claimed the team's fifth title. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, assistant coaches Joe Ganeshny, Jim Hedman, Chris Corfis, Mike Murphy; volunteer assistant coaches Tom Clancy, John Fox, Nolan Lamb, Matt Memlets, Keith Petranic, Reed Sundberg, and most especially to retiring head coach Stan Ridell, winning his second title at York for these outstanding achievements. Thank you. What I'm going to ask you to do is come along the side here and shake everyone's hand on the board in the cabinet as you go through, and I can hand you the proclamation. And can I give you the extra? Who shall I give the extras to? I'll find one. Okay, Kathy.
To her.
All right.
Margaret, may I add one thing?
Absolutely.
First of all, can we have a round of applause for these fine young men and their coaches? Second, can we have a round of applause for Stan? Stan, I just want to tell you that York High School and our community is a far, far better place because you were here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The book says it all.
I am taking this home in a minute.
You know what? We print up a book, literally. A father really helps me, does the bulk of the work. We were hoping to have the whole book printed. And in the book, what it says, it goes all the way back to the beginning of the school, 1920-whatever, and in that book, it'll have the top 50 fastest kids of all time per event and relays and every record that you could imagine. And it was, it's been, about 10 years ago was really a labor. Now we've been able to upkeep it pretty good. But he wanted, we postponed it. This is the cover, and he's postponed that till we got through the state meet to see so it was as up-to-date as possible. But if you would like a copy, I'll make sure you can get one. Seriously, it's, for me, it's fascinating reading. You may find it too, but it's a good, it's a good history of the sport at our school.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Jim Burrell and the DECA team to come up. As they're coming up, this is an honor to also honor these students from the Distributive Education Clubs of America DECA. It's a student organization whose program of leadership and personal development is designed specifically for students enrolled in marketing education classes. They go and compete, DECA advisors, and take an active part in the development and growth of communities in which they live. And in March, eight DECA students from York competed in the state conference in Decatur. Three students qualified for the national conference by placing in the top four in their event at the state DECA conference with over 800 students participating, and they're here tonight to be honored by the Board of Education. So with that, Jim.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Burrell. I'm the business teacher at York High School. And why represent the DECA club? DECA stands for Distributive Education Clubs of America. Well, the first thing before we get with our amazing kids here, I just wanted to say from all three, all four of us, congratulations to that track team. It's incredibly difficult to win a track championship, and Coach Rattle has won three. And one of the students told me, he's won actually one in 1A, 2A, and now he's won one in 3A, and that's just an incredible accomplishment, and I want to make sure we recognize that from our DECA club. DECA is a marketing-based organization that teaches kids in high schools across the nation and in other countries how to participate in role plays, how to think on your feet, the, you know, just the, you know, that it takes the economics that we learn in class and it puts it into exams that the kids take. And so when we first meet in September, I believe there was 21 kids that went to the regional DECA meet, which is at Rosemont Horizon. And to get to the state meet, and when we get there, by the way, at the state, local, and national level, the kids compete in two role plays, so that kind of tests how they think on their feet. And then they take economics exams, and they're very difficult exams, and so you kind of have to have both. You have to have the book smarts, but then you also have to have, you know, the ability to recognize a problem and see how to deal with that problem. And you only have 10 minutes to make a decision. So you are judged against every other student in that event, and you are ranked. If there's 25 kids, and actually there's more than that, it's usually 35 to 50 kids in the event, you're ranked 1 through 35 or 1 to 50. And so in order to get to the state meet, our kids have to place in the top 10 at the local competition, and these kids easily did that. The tough one then is when we get to the three-day state competition down in Decatur. All the top schools are there, and most of them bring their AP Economics kids, and it's really difficult to get to the national meet because if there's 50 kids in your event, you have to place in the top four, and trust me, that is very difficult to do. And then you, if you do that, then you are invited to the national competition. This year it was in Atlanta, and I was privileged to spend five days with the boys in Atlanta. We just had a great trip. But then again, you're competing in Ryan, or in Evan's event, there was 220 boys from, well, boys and girls from across the United States. And in Ryan and Dan's event, there was over 150 kids. So our kids did amazing. They finished top third, you know, in all their events, and we're just really proud of them. So that's basically DECA, and I really appreciate this opportunity to recognize these kids. They worked incredibly hard throughout the whole school year, and just really, you know, when you get to know them, as I did for five days, you know, spending, you know, time with them, I trust them wholeheartedly. I trusted them at the state meet. They're just really amazing kids that were going to do a lot. You know, they're intelligent, they're quick thinkers. 15, 20 years down the road, they'll be the leaders, you know, in the society. I'm just really proud of our kids. So congratulations, fellas, and thanks again for recognizing it.
We're fortunate and blessed in this community to be able to provide as a community a comprehensive high school for our kids, where we can provide things like DECA with wonderful support. But ultimately, these kids then take that and they make the most of it, supported by their families and their teachers and their community. They go out there and they show success, and we're very proud of you. So thank you very much, and let me read the proclamation here. Whereas the purpose of the Illinois Distributive Education Clubs of America DECA is to enhance the co-curricular education of students with interests in marketing, management, and entrepreneurship. And whereas DECA helps students develop skills and competence for their marketing careers, build self-esteem, experience leadership, and practice community service, and is committed to the defense of marketing education and the growth of business and education partnerships. And whereas the regional DECA conference held in Rosemont this winter, where over 600 participated, students who competed in their event had to place in the top 10 to advance. And whereas in March, eight York Community High School DECA students competed in the state conference in Decatur, Illinois, where three students qualified for the national conference by placing in the top four in their event at the state DECA conference with over 800 students participating. And whereas Daniel Saroni, Ryan Sacco, and Ryan Sacco placed third in the financial services team, decision-making, and Evan Wendell, Wendell, placed fourth in the automotive services marketing, and all three advanced to the 68th Annual DECA International Career Development Conference in Atlanta, held May 3 through 6, 2014. And whereas United States Senator Johnny Isaacson from Georgia noted, "DECA has admirably fulfilled the role of preparing high school and college students for careers in marketing, management, entrepreneurship since 1946, and no doubt this conference will further encourage career exploration while recognizing student achievement. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents and their teacher, Jim Burrell, for these outstanding achievements." Thank you.
All right, guys. All right, guys. Do you want to?
I can, yeah.
Run the gauntlet of handshakes and come for your.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Good job. Thank you. Good night. Thank you. I appreciate it. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. The book says it all.
I am taking this home in a minute.
You know what? We print up a book, literally. A father really helps me, does the bulk of the work. We were hoping to have the whole book printed. And in the book, what it says, it goes all the way back to the beginning of the school, 1920-whatever, and in that book, it'll have the top 50 fastest kids of all time per event and relays and every record that you could imagine. And it was, it's been, about 10 years ago was really a labor. Now we've been able to upkeep it pretty good. But he wanted, we postponed it. This is the cover, and he's postponed that till we got through the state meet to see so it was as up-to-date as possible. But if you would like a copy, I'll make sure you can get one. Seriously, it's, for me, it's fascinating reading. You may find it too, but it's a, it's a good, it's a good history of the sport at our school.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Jim Burrell and the DECA team to come up. As they're coming up, this is an honor to also honor these students from the Distributive Education Clubs of America DECA. It's a student organization whose program of leadership and personal development is designed specifically for students enrolled in marketing education classes. They go and compete. DECA advisors then take an active part in the development and growth of communities in which they live. And in March, eight DECA students from York competed in the state conference in Decatur. Three students qualified for the national conference by placing in the top four in their event at the state DECA conference with over 800 students participating, and they're here tonight to be honored by the Board of Education. So with that, Jim.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Burrell. I'm the business teacher at York High School. And why represent the DECA club? DECA stands for Distributive Education Clubs of America. Well, the first thing before we get with our amazing kids here, I just wanted to say from all three, all four of us, congratulations to that track team. It's incredibly difficult to win a track championship, and Coach Rattle has won three. And one of the students told me, he's won actually one in 1A, 2A, and now he's won one in 3A, and that's just an incredible accomplishment, and I want to make sure we recognize that from our DECA club. DECA is a marketing-based organization that teaches kids in high schools across the nation and in other countries how to participate in role plays, how to think on your feet,
and Dr. Kathy Kostick is being recommended as the new Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. The Board of Education met them at a previous, at our closed session, and we believe that we have two really outstanding people to join our team, and I want to welcome them to Elmhurst 205. And as I said, later on in the agenda, the Board will be voting on their contract. So, thank you.
Next on our agenda is public comment. I don't have any blue cards up here, and if there's anyone in the audience that is here to make a public comment, please come on up. Seeing none, let's move on to superintendent's communication.
I have two items tonight. One is our Freedom of Information requests that were received since our last board meeting. We have had two. One regarding payments made to a past board member, and also one regarding specific bid information. Both of those Freedom of Information Acts were approved and sent out. The second item on the agenda is just to review with you the Futures and Innovations Committee that I held this past year. I gathered a number of faculty members, and we met off and on during the 13, 14 school year to talk about ideas for innovation, either at the building level or the district level. And I have included three documents for the Board of Education this evening. One is just a summary of the work that the committee did, along with the members of the committee. The second one are the items that we actually discussed, some in great detail on innovations or ideas that were brought to the committee, that the committee discussed. And then finally, you will see an abbreviated rank order of those innovative ideas as far as their feasibility and desirability to move forward. And so that ranking was somewhat skewed because not all voted on all of their, all across the board. But what we did is we distilled the top three, so the Board had an idea of what those were. Let me just say, I want to thank the committee. The committee really met pretty faithfully throughout the last year. We had a lot of discussion on a lot of ideas. There's a huge binder. I think the Board got part of that binder previous to this. But there are much more details in those binders about some of these concepts as they move forward, along with the research. But what I've done is just summarized what those would include in the discussions that we had. And you can see they're pretty varied. They vary from project-based learning at the high school that is technically enabled of having students actually do a senior project for graduation, community-based, all the way down to full-day kindergarten, peer coaching, data warehouse, which has already happened, restructuring the high school, just a variety of ideas. And the committee spent, as I said, a lot of time discussing each one of these. I think the feeling from the committee was that there was merit in all of them, and probably at the point where there is an idea that a community engagement discussion needs to happen on some of these ideas to move these to the community, see how feasible are they would be in the Elmhurst community and how desirable they would be. We did not talk about the finances or the resources that would cost to put any of these in place. I put that aside and just wanted the committee to focus on innovation themselves, didn't want to focus on, again, feasibility, resources, and those kinds of ideas for this part of the discussion. And so what you have is pure kind of brainstorming of where the committee wanted to go. I think a couple of things that kind of stand out, I think especially as you look at the priority list, I think, I think the priorities that they based, that they voted on, those top three, are pretty basic, and they're not really what I would call innovative, outside-the-box ideas. But I think it's a reflection on some of the needs that the district still has that need to be addressed first before we get to the next level of innovation. So when you look at things like math specialists and learning specialists being introduced, if you remember, that math specialist idea was also introduced in the staffing discretionary funding. So we're going to continue to look at that one because it's obviously a need that the faculty really feels needs to be addressed at some point in the future. Full-day kindergarten, I think we've heard that from the community somewhat. I think the teachers are also saying that in some form, a full-day kindergarten, or at least maybe an at-risk kindergarten program, should be explored. One of the buildings did introduce a concept of an at-risk kindergarten feeder program that we're going to look at more closely this coming year, and dependent on funding, may bring that back to the Board of Education. But I think overall, what you get a sense of is just some of the basic needs that I think the faculty are still wanting to address in some fashion before we move on to some of the other concepts that they are talking about. And finally, I think the curriculum development was the third area that they wanted to look at. I think that that's a factor of a couple of things that we talked about. One is how quickly curriculum and innovation is changing, especially when it comes to core curriculum issues and curriculum in general. New science core curriculum is coming about. I think there's a real desire on the faculty to really spend some quality time looking at vertical and horizontal articulation between all of the, all of the grade levels. And in a unit district, that's an advantage for us. We should probably do more of that. It's a function of time, and we talked about that. When do we find the quality time for professional staff to come together and have those discussions across grade level, across buildings? And I think that's, you know, an area of emphasis that we need to start looking at more and more as we move out on professional development and discussing how we can provide more time to deal with some of these. So kind of gives you a feel of where the committee was, what they talked about. And I don't know if board members have any questions, but I just wanted to, I thought it'd be a good night to capture that for the Board and give you a sense of what that committee talked about.
Karen.
Dave, just to elaborate a little bit or reference what you just talked about for professional development. So there's two additional items that are on the list about professional development. Is that not what was included with this curriculum development? So are there three different areas that are going on? Okay.
There's three, three areas. One is curriculum development in the sense that how do we know that we're articulating the curriculum across grade levels and across buildings? That's one. Two is professional development in the sense that bringing teachers up to speed on, well, we're going to go through this, this coming year in writing curriculum, for example, at the K-5 level. That's training, professional development. That's totally different than their articulation part they're talking about. So that's a completely different concept. What was the other one, Karen, that?
There's professional learning, staff development model, and then the other one was increased instructional professional development days.
Well, and that's tied. How do you do all of this? How do you provide time for teachers to articulate curriculum between grade levels and buildings? At the same time, how do you provide more time for professional development on training new curriculum? And where does that time come from, and how do we do that? So that was the three linked pieces.
Okay, okay. So if we were to look at item number three, we'd really be looking at several other listed.
Yes, yeah.
Are there other areas that are like that, that are linked? Because that one, I thought-
Not that I would know, not that I see.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Again, I think these are concepts that the Board can use and the community can use to start talking about, you know, future changes, future direction of the district, and where they want to go. Shannon, you had something?
Yeah, a quick question. So how did you leave it with the Innovation Committee? Are they, they want the Board to talk about some of these, or they have some next steps?
We really didn't. We kind of concluded, and we weren't sure, you know, I think the next step was go to the Board and give the Board this report, and then talk about where we wanted to go from here. So that's kind of where we left it. So they were still interested, but, you know, we had gone as far as I think we could go on the discussion.
It's a question, and I thought I heard, Dave, that you mentioned a next step as getting some community involvement and input on that. So that is, I'm wondering about that next step. And I also want to, and I should have started this off, I should have thanked the committee for, you know, really delving into these topics and trying to prioritize, giving us direction on what next steps were.
I think it's, I think it's a twofold process. I think it's community engagement, but I also think some of this is going to be faculty engagement, too. I think getting some of this out to the faculty in bigger numbers to have a discussion is also part of this, you know? What do we want to look at when we come to, for example, project-based learning? Is that a direction that faculty wants to start discussing and looking at as part of the infusion of curriculum within the classroom instruction model? Same thing with the senior project. Where does that fit in? How does that look? You know, those were just, these were concepts that were just discussed, but then there's a whole piece about, okay, if we really want to, you know, explore these, what does it mean? And what are the implications of doing a senior-based project, and how would we go about that?
John?
I too want to thank everybody on the committee who worked. And I also want to thank you, Dave, for leading this committee and bringing in a lot of different voices whenever we have issues in front of us. And I appreciate that approach that you take, and I think the community benefits from that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, again, let me echo the other board members' sentiments, thanking everybody that served on this committee for their time. This is extremely valuable information to us. And, you know, we've said many times that we want at the ready a list of things that are priorities that we should be pursuing, and when the opportunity arises, that we have the resources from them, that we want to be ready so we can move quickly. And this list gives us those things. And after further discussion and further refinement, I think this is time very well spent by our administration and our faculty. So thank you for all the effort that was put into this. Next on our agenda is the approval of board meeting minutes from May 27 and June 10. Are there any changes to those meeting minutes as submitted? John, you still looking?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Then hearing none, those minutes stand as submitted. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they'd like to remove from that list? Hearing none. Then can I get a motion for items A through H, please?
I move that we approve the superintendent's agenda, a consent agenda, excuse me, items A through H.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Move by Karen, seconded by John, to approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through H. And we're spending money, so Mrs. Walsh, please.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Abner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Next is the superintendent's action item list. There are items A through D. We need to take them one at a time. So the first is approval of a resolution approving bank depositories, none of which, I may add, that I work for. So can I have a motion? Karen.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution which approves the banks, savings, and loans, and investment pools, which the district may use as bank depositories for the 2014, 2015 school year.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Emily, to approve the bank depositories used by the district to deposit our funds. Mrs. Walsh, we need a roll call vote on that? Yes?
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Abner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. And then item B. Shannon?
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the donation from the foundation on behalf of the York Student Enrichment Team in the amount of $25,000.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Shannon, seconded by Margaret. Motion to approve a $25,000 grant to the York Student Enrichment Team. So thank you very much to our foundation and to all the people that donated the money to be passed through the foundation. So, Mrs. Walsh, do we need a, we don't need a roll call vote on that? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries. And then item C. Emily?
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation of a color printer from the Emerson School PTA in the amount of $1,707. This donation is accepted in accordance with policy number 880, gift to the district.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Moved by Emily, seconded by John. And it's just a voice vote, correct? All right. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, that motion carries. And then item D, please.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation of a three-quarters bass and two bows from Ray and Sally Sione in the amount of $1,400. This donation is accepted in accordance with the policy number 880, gift to the district.
Moved by John, seconded by Karen. And again, thanks to the Sione's. I know Sally loved being the Emerson School music teacher, and it's a person who is a great example of somebody who is totally committed, and their heart is in their job. So again, thank you to Sally and her husband. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. That leads us to our upcoming meetings. Tuesday, June 24, there'll be a Finance and Operations Committee meeting in this building at 6:30 PM. And then we have suspended our committee meetings for the month of July. So our next meeting, and the only Board of Education meeting in July, will be our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, July 15, at 7:30 in the rooms we're presently in. And then we have, next on our agenda is two action items on closed-session business that we discussed. So the first for salary recommendations? John, how soon we lose the paper. There we go.
I move that the Board of Ed-
Can you have a number?
Yes, you do. Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve the non-union, non-administrative salaries and vacation days as recommended by the administration.
Do I hear a second, please? Moved by Emily, seconded by Shannon. We do need a roll call vote on that, correct? Mrs. Walsh?
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Abner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. The next on our agenda is a memorandum of understanding with one of our labor organizations. John?
It's my turn now?
It is your turn now.
Okay, good. I move that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement between Elmhurst District 205 and the Elmhurst Paraprofessional and School-Related Personnel Council, PSRP.
I'll second.
Moved by John, seconded by Margaret. Mrs. Walsh?
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Abner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That motion, seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Next is board communication. I posted one item on the board communication agenda, which is the committee recommendation from the city's finance committee that affects us, affects the school district, a new ordinance that imposes a- that imposes an impact fee upon a developer that is building any more than two houses on one site. And of course, the 56 homes going up at the old hospital, that is what this applies to. The city attorneys felt that there are three types of impact fees. A, what I'll call a lag fee. We pay our property taxes a year in arrears so that somebody buys a house, they send their kids to our schools, and a year later, they pay their first, they pay their first real estate tax bill. And that is, the city's old ordinance was actually that type of a lag fee. There is a capital projects fee, so to pay for brick and mortar and other capital projects that would result from the influx of new students. And then there is a property, what I'll call a property fee, where a developer, particularly in a brand-new subdivision, would actually donate land to the school district as a fee to actually build a new school. Well, there's very little of that going on in Elmhurst, given that we're a landlocked community. What the city's attorneys felt, as they looked at all the case law and as these ordinances have been challenged in school districts, generally by the developer who's unwilling to pay the fee, they found that the property fee is the one that is case-tested and they chose to go toward a property fee format. Now, they also, since there's very little land in Elmhurst for the school district to buy, that fee also allows the school district to use that, for the developer to donate money in lieu of land, and that's what this ordinance is, as it pertains to that Bertow Street development. And in this case, our, the old fee was a, like I said, a lag fee of $6,500. This is a donation of money in lieu of land of $8,400 per house. And our attorneys and the city attorneys inform us that we can use this money to be spent on capital projects as well, as they pertain to projects that are a result of the influx of students from this development in our district. So primarily, those students will be going to Field, certainly Madison, if there are any students that would attend Madison. Field would be their primary elementary school, as the district is presently districted. Sandberg would be their middle school, and then, of course, York would be their high school. So this fee could be spent on projects as it relates to these students in any of those schools. So with that clarification, I guess the other thing I'll point out is District 205, on average, spends about $12,700 per student, per year, to educate them. As I said, the old fee was $6,500. The new fee is, that we were able to use in our operating budget. This fee, we will not be able to use in our operating budget, but it will go to our capital projects budget, which is certainly not overfunded. So it's underfunded by any means. So that is a welcome infusion of capital. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Just got this and haven't had a lot of time to spend with it. But it does look like an improvement in the ordinance. This is for an ordinance of general application. To the extent there is another development, this, these criteria will apply. Is that right?
That is true.
And we're grateful from the cooperative efforts of the city council in trying to help us with our mission to fund the resources for this professional organization to deliver education in this school district. And we're grateful for everything they've done to help us. I think what this process did, though, is it showed that some of the communications between the school board and the city could probably be improved. I think we need to reassemble our Park City School meetings a little more regularly, get them back together. Because I think there was probably a little miscommunication on some of these things that didn't help the relationship. And I would like to offer my efforts to get those meetings back on track and get us back together. Because we both have worthwhile missions, we're both working hard at it, and I think we need to talk a little bit more and explain a few things to each other a little bit more. But I'm grateful for their actions and their cooperative efforts in getting this done.
John, that's a good point. The Park City Schools meeting is representatives from each of those organizations that would get together quarterly. The last couple of those meetings have been canceled for whatever reason. But I will be happy to get on the phone with the Park District Board President and the mayor and suggest that we start to reconvene those meetings. I think a open line of communication between our three government entities is always helpful to the citizens of the three districts. Anything else? Any other board communications? Hearing none?
Could I just?
Yes, you can.
I just want to thank two individuals and recognize them for their service to the district. This is their last board meeting. They have been not clapping, I appreciate that. One is missing right now. But I'll do, I'll talk slow. But I do want to thank both Dr. Charles Johns and Brad Hillman for their service to the district and, important to me, their loyalty and their support of their superintendent in the last three years. I am, I owe my success to these gentlemen and Meg, who has left. A lot of other people are responsible for the district's success, and it's not me. It's these people who work and are dedicated to the students and the families of this district. Charles and Brad really epitomize that. They put in endless hours, they're devoted, they're dedicated. And I have to say, they have always made a determination of what is best for kids as their first priority. And really, when I came on board three years ago, I had a conversation with them over the phone and talked about being a servant leader. And I can tell you that the things we talked about over the phone, and I hadn't met them yet, really fulfilled my perfect match of who I would want in my cabinet, because they certainly are models of what it means to be a servant leader. They are committed to other people's success, not themselves. They are the kind of positions that sometimes the community doesn't recognize, but they are such key people to an organization. And creating an environment that really is supportive of all the people within the organization and willing to be a model for putting in the dedication and time of these positions that really make a difference. So I want to thank both of them. They will be sorely missed from my perspective. And I just want to say that, again, my success is a big part responsible because of these two people and Meg, who has left, because of their dedication to the system and their loyalty to me. So thank you, gentlemen. I really appreciate it.
Can I add one thing to that? That if you look through the record of student achievement in this district over the last four or five years, it is a very, very steep, improving record. And it is no coincidence that that time period is exactly the time period that these three assistant superintendents have been here. It takes, it takes great leadership and you'll be sorely missed. So thank you very much for the time you've put in at this district and for your service to our students. Thank you. It's greatly appreciated.
I just want to say thanks to you guys and Meg, who's not here. You guys taught us amazing amounts. You are true professionals and great teachers yourself. You taught the board what you do, how you do, what you needed to do. You empowered us and, you know, derivatively empowered the entire community, because we are supposed to represent the community values, and you guys were totally respectful of that under very difficult circumstances. And I'm grateful to both of you. Thank you.
Well, we've gotten to that point in our agenda where there's just nothing left on it. So therefore, I declare this meeting adjourned.